This is a public meeting, it's also live streamed, so a big welcome to anyone who is either watching or attending. I'd just like to say a big thank you at the beginning as well to all the support for this group, so to the colleagues within the council, health and wellbeing board, that have put all the effort into producing the meeting today and also facilitating the meeting itself, so a big thank you for that. So I'm going to pass over to Joanne, just with some housekeeping.
Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast by the council's website. You should be aware that the council's data controller under the data protection act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Anybody who's speaking, who hasn't collected a name card, there should be one for you if we knew you were coming, so have a look and collect it if there is one, and then you can bring it forward when you speak. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. I'm just going to maybe ask if we can go around and introduce ourselves. Should we go this way?
I'm Dan Spice, I'm a policy officer providing support to the board.
Okay, Fiona Phoenix from Sheffield Hallam University.
I'm Sinjin Lisi, GP, I'm one of the clinical leads at South Yorkshire ICB Sheffield Place. My lead is urgent care, although I'm deputising for Lee Salisbury today.
Sarah, junior strategy and partnerships director at Sheffield Teaching Hospital.
Becky Toll, assistant director here on behalf of Meredith Teasdale from Children's Social Care.
Hi, I'm James Drury, director of strategy Sheffield Health and Social Care.
Judy Robinson, Chair of Healthwatch Sheffield.
Councillor Argentio, Chair of Adult Social Care Policy Committee.
Hi, I'm Catherine Bunton, I'm the Director of Quality and Strategy in Adult Social Care, deputising for Alexis Chapel.
Greg Fair, Director of Public Health.
Afternoon, everyone. Kate Martin, Exeter Director, City Futures, Sheffield City Council.
Joanne Cooper, Democratic Services.
And I'm Zach McMurran, the Medical Director of Sheffield Place within the ICB, GP and co-chair of the Health and Wellbeing Board. So welcome, everyone. Should we move on? So apologies for absence, we've got councillor Don Dale, we've got councillor Douglas Johnson, we've got Kate Joseph, we've got Yvonne Millard from Sheffield Children's Hospital, we've got Meredith, but we've got Becky, who's substituting, we've got Rob Sykes from the University of Sheffield, Emma Latimer and Lee Salisbury, and apparently Sinjin is deputising for both, and we have Megan Ory and May Connolly is substituting, and Helen Sins has also sent apologies. Any other apologies that we've got today? Okay, any declarations of interest relevant to today's... Sorry.
So Alexis Chapel with Catherine. Alexis Chapel, Centre of Apologies.
Brilliant, thanks. Okay, any declarations of interest with particular reference to today's agenda, but also if there's anything that people haven't previously declared that they want to declare now? Okay, and then there are no items which require the exclusion of the public and the press. Public questions, there are no public questions today, and we'll move on to the first part of the agenda, which is the Healthwatch update, and that's Judy.
Thank you very much, colleagues. You have had in your set of papers the report about long Covid, the work that Healthwatch Sheffield and VAS, Volta Action Sheffield, have done. It seems to me it's an important and ongoing theme, and the approach that was used, partnerships at all levels, have some really important lessons, but I want to suggest, if you're able to agree, that we have a little longer time with a proper presentation. I can't do it justice in a couple of minutes, so I'm just looking at the chair, and I think if the steering group could have a look at that and put it on a future agenda, we can do it justice, if that's okay.
Sounds good, thanks, Judy.
Great, so the three things I want to draw to your attention, and the first one is about GP services, and if people don't know, we have a lot of the public who get in touch with Healthwatch about a whole range of things, and in the most recent three months up to November this year, 443 individuals have got in touch about GP services, and despite all the things you might hear, it's pretty positive, really. Eighty-four per cent shared positive stories of their encounters, and particularly that other people, like physios and nurses and the whole set of people around GP services, people experience it in a very positive way. There are obviously downsides, and we don't hear everything, but one of the downsides I just want to pick up is, well, two. One about mental health, people coming to the GP with what they think is a mental health problem and really being, I suppose, fobbed off, getting printouts from the website, not getting the personalised guidance that they were really asking for. So I think, I'm just looking at James, where that seems to me to be quite a common response that we have, and I'm sure there are a multitude of reasons for that, but it is a common theme. And then the other one, we particularly went to talk to asylum seekers about their use of primary care, and we know that sometimes when they don't understand it, they end up in A and E, so there's something about getting that right, and one of the things that they find difficult to navigate are the system called ANEMA, and all those web-based systems that people find difficult to use for a whole range of reasons, and I brought that up before. I think we need to have a look at that, because it is stopping people accessing GP services and probably ending up in an inappropriate place, or just not getting treated. So more details on that if people wish to have them. So that's one about primary care. And then looking at social care, and one of Healthwatch's critical roles is to try and talk to people whose voices aren't heard, and so we do that by getting out there. And recently, we've been to a couple of care homes, Rosebank and the other one whose name I can't ever pronounce, Leers, talking to residents who say, and there's a little report on the website, and they say all sorts of things. One in particular I liked is how much they thought the NHS was a good thing, and they can probably remember when it wasn't there, so that was interesting, and other things about using it. And just as a follow-on from that, we're doing a roundtable with the newish MP for Sheffield Central, Abtazam, about social care tomorrow. The home manager for those two homes is coming to that, so we're trying to make sure that as well as hearing directly, we take those experiences and put them into that strategic framework, and when you think about the 10-year plan and the need for a balancing social care plan, those voices, I think, will be really important. So it's in that bigger context. And then the third last one is a little bit more niche, but it's something that we hear quite a bit about, and it's about specialist nursing care that's no longer available. And on work we've done about end-of-life care, we know that that specialist nursing care, and its continuity means a lot to people, it's really critical to them having a good death or a good continuing life, and that has been largely withdrawn. So I think there is an issue there, I'm not quite sure where it goes, but it's something that we're getting quite a bit of feedback on, so I'll leave that with you as a third one. But it seems to me those things about people's voices that we need to hear, and we need to insert those into all these meetings that we have about systems, this is about people who are on the other end of those systems. So I'm really happy to take questions. Most of this material is on the website, and some of it you got in your pack. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. I think most people would agree, there's a lot of pressure in the system at the moment, and I think particularly in primary social care, community sector, the voluntary sector, it feels as if things are very, very fragile, and I think a lot of the changes in the recent budget have probably made that even, or certainly made that even more fragile. So I think it's good to know that there are still positives there, in spite of much of that, but a real reason why we need to do that left shift that we all talk eloquently about, but never quite happens in the volume that we need to do it, because we don't have long, we certainly don't have 10 years, and I do worry when people talk about 10-year plans, that you're just kicking things into the long grass. So I think it's really important that we try and do what we're committed to as a system in Sheffield, to start making a difference. So thanks for that. Any comments? Greg? Greg?
Thanks, Zach. Judy, thanks, as ever. The long Covid thing, I agree, it's one of the things that worries me, my slight theory is it's nobody's job, but yes, I would absolutely support scheduling a longer conversation about the state of play, state of art, and the who needs to do what. The recommendations in the report were really, really, really helpful, so I'd frame it around that. GP services, I'd just dwell on the 84% of people found positive, that isn't what you see on the front cover of the Daily Mail, I mean, that doesn't happen by magic, it happens because a lot of GPs were really, well, GPs and community care staff were really, really, really hard to make it so, and I think it's just, there's no comment, no question, I think it's just worth dwelling on that one. It isn't all broke, though it is under pressure, and to use Sinjin's line, it is full, so that needs some thought. Just the specialist nursing being no longer available, you might not know, and it might be in the pack, and I may have missed it, but what type of specialist nursing, and withdrawn by whom? James is looking quizzical too, not him, but...
Yes, I'm a quizzicaler. It was the Spina Bifida Association talking about that, and they lost the specialist nurse, and that was something that they really valued a lot, for all the reasons I indicated, and I suspect this is one specialism, but there are others as well that people might be losing. And it does have a direct hit on patients, it's not just a bit of a system reorganised, it's a real impact on people, because they knew that person.
Thank you. James?
Yeah, thank you for the report, really, really welcome the feedback from people that you're bringing. There's a couple of pieces in the report that echo the conversation nationally around the 10-year plan and three big shifts, et cetera, so digital needs to not mean the only route, it needs to be a choice for people, and similarly working with people's agency as individuals. So I'll come to the piece around primary care and mental health and people feeling fobbed off. We do want to support people to support themselves and each other, and to build agency, so providing information is a key part of that, but it needs to not feel fobbed off. We have introduced in the last year a primary care mental health service, which is jointly developed between Primary Care Sheffield and SHFC, which is designed to take more primary care expertise into primary care networks and embed them in a primary care setting and to improve access. I expect that is bedding in, and I expect that there is, well, no, there is room for further development of communication about what's accessible by whom, where, both for GPs and for members of the public. So it'd be really helpful to keep building that dialogue, listening to people and how they find that.
Yeah, so that if we have more along those lines, we'll feed back. I mean, just on the message about GPs, I mean, this is people who, we don't ask them, they just come to us and tell us these things, so it's an interesting counter to the negatives, I think, notwithstanding the pressure that's clearly there.
So I think it was Sarah next then, Angela?
Thanks, Judy, and really important to start with those stories and perspectives from people, and wanted also to recognise all the hard work that's gone into that positive feedback. Just to come back on the long Covid report, would be really welcome to have a longer conversation about that, because I think that's been a really continually evolving, the long Covid hub that we host has been a really continually evolving service, as we understand more about long Covid, so I think there's quite a lot of further progression that we could share in a longer session. We've actually recently captured some really powerful patient stories that would be useful to share with colleagues as well at a later date, that could talk a bit about how that's evolved, and are taking forwards from the recommendations that that evaluation makes around making information more accessible and widely available, support with welfare benefits applications, and some of those other things that come out as recommendations. So welcome the evaluation and the insight that it's gathered, welcome a further conversation, and perhaps we could bring some of the patient stories we've been collecting into that as well to represent those. And then also noting the point around the specialist nursing, we're following up to understand some of the background to that, and happy to have a conversation outside of the room or update at the next meeting on that.
Just on the long Covid report, it seems to me there's that particular theme, but some of the lessons cut across other areas too, so I think there's some learning across the system.
And sorry, one final thought on that is that I think it's quite timely, because I think there's some uncertainty around the future commissioning arrangements for some of the specialist support around long Covid, and related questions around what we learnt through that approach for other similar long-term and fatigue-related symptoms and conditions that we could learn from. So yeah, worth getting into that in more detail at a future date.
Thank you. Angela?
Thank you, Chair. Judy, thank you very much for that. I think the version we have is a bit older, it's August to September, but I wanted to, it was very interesting to know, like, the practical kind of little things that make people's life harder in terms of GP access. So for example, the setup of the waiting room, how much people enjoyed the automated BMI and blood pressure machine, but they're wearing public spaces, some people didn't feel comfortable about using them, and also the kind of messages on the automated kind of machine telephone messages that are not updating, and it's little practical things that GP surgeries could sort out very easily. I would be very interested to see how representative of the population the people, because in the long Covid report, it's really clear who the people were, and the demographics of it, but in these reports, we don't have that information. It would be, so also in terms of reach of Healthwatch, how much we reach all of Sheffield.
There's always a dilemma with these things. You want to encourage people to get in touch, but you don't want to then quiz them about, I don't know, how old they are, where they come from, and every bit of their personal history. So I think we do lots of things that do do that, I think this is a more open access, and you get what you get. So it's not a piece of scientific research, it's a, you know, a finger in the air, and it gives you some sense of what people are saying, but you're right, it may be everybody from, I don't know, wherever, across pool, but who knows?
Brilliant, thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, yeah, just a quick comment, really. You touched on the social care recommendations, and I remember the report on the impact of Covid, on the long impact of Covid on residential settings, and I know the adult commissioning team received that well, and have been looking into how we can continue to work together. But some of the things that came out from that was generally, the feedback was supportive of people in the care homes, but it was felt that they were left waiting for news, for information, to be able to respond and be able to support residents and their families, and just sort of triangulating that with something in your report, which isn't directly connected, but some people not accessing services due to cultural barriers or a lack of trust in the medical profession. There's something for us, I think, in really being as proactive as we can, not just with Covid, but with anything where we have information, to making sure our partners, providers and people in the community have access to that, so that wellbeing is accessible to as many people in Sheffield as we can get it.
Okay, thank you. Some very difficult decisions to make with very limited funding, and I guess even more reason why the productivity opportunity from the Darcy review is going to be really important, because I don't think we're going to get a lot of extra money coming into the system. So thanks for that. I think we just asked to receive note and comments, so I think we've probably done that. Should we move on to the Better Care Fund update? So Martin, do you want to come up, maybe introduce yourself and your colleagues?
Thank you, Chair. Afternoon, everybody. My name's Martin Smith, I'm the Assistant Director of Transformation and Delivery, in the joint role between Sheffield Council and Sheffield ICB, and Programme Manager of Better Care Fund, and I've got my colleague with me today.
Good afternoon, I'm Sharon Marriott, and I'm the Senior Transformation and Delivery Manager in the Sheffield ICB Place. I lead around some of the areas of discharge and care outside of hospital.
Thank you. So this paper's an assurance paper on the Better Care Fund quarter two, and it includes an element that was requested, which is more of a deep dive into some of the work in the Better Care Fund. So the falls element, Sharon's going to talk about some of the collaborative work we've been doing around falls prevention with partners, and cover that area. Just for the assurance, the quarter two template was published on the 27th of September, and was due back to NHS England on the 31st of August, it seems a while ago now, but in terms of the agreed delegation, we jointly completed it between the council and the ICB, and took it through the governance routes, and it was signed off by the Chairs of the Health and Wellbeing Board before submission. The quarter two template was significantly, required significantly more information than the quarter one. The quarter one only asked how we were spending our Better Care Fund, only asked for financial information. The quarter two asked for an update on our metrics with narratives about if we're off track or on track, and what we're doing as a place to recover it. It asked for a refresh of our capacity and demand planning that we had to submit in June, and actual data with our capacity and demand in terms of our flow in our system, and asked for the expenditure data in terms of how we were doing in our Better Care Fund finances. So in terms of the metrics, the ambulatory care measure we talked in depth about at the last meeting, and we have seen the rate in quarter one and quarter two was lower than the previous years. However, the quarter two data in the report, we would say some caveats around that, because of the timing of the submission, not all the counting and coding changes were in, so it does look like we're doing exceptionally well. I would expect in the quarter three return, that to look still on a downward trajectory, but not as well as it's in the report. We had a clinical review of some of the primary diagnosis, with some of the colleagues here, and the data does need more looking at. In terms of the primary diagnosis of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, that's clear, that is still number one in terms of admissions, and when we look at where the admissions are coming from, still we're seeing 30% of the total admissions for the 65-plus emergency admissions for long-term conditions coming from our top two most deprived SAs. And we're, again, trying to explore why that is what's happening. We do have a significant number of the population living in those as well, but it is higher than the population. There's focus work, as planned on, on this as part of our winter respiratory initiative, high intensity users, those who frequently go into A and E. There's also work underway to mobilise spirometry for more accurate diagnosis, and increase the uptake of pulmonary rehabilitation. And the North East Community Model has just concluded their consultation, and they're spoken to over a thousand people in the area. It wasn't directly linked to healthcare services, but they've asked communities what they would need and how they could, what they would need to improve their communities, which you'll think talks to the wider determinants. So the results of that work we can include in the next report that comes to Health and Wellbeing Board about a future community model. The discharge to home still remains significantly, well, we're still one of the best in terms of reporting that, 98% of people go home or back to where they came from. And in terms of some of the updates, I put them in the paper, we've got the transfer of care hub has seen good progress, and now we've got a digital discharge tool in place and being used. So it's a really good example of the work we're doing jointly around discharging people home. In terms of the rates of permanent admissions for older people into care, we're not on track to meet that measure. We did put in a stretch target for that, to try and be in line with the Yorkshire Humber average. We are still lower than the core city average, but looking at the data and speaking to the teams around it, we feel like it could be returning to rates that were previously before Covid, so still some work on that. And falls, we're on track for our falls metric, and there's a lot of collaborative work on falls going on, and I'll pass over to Sharon to tell you about some of the work that I've been doing at place collaboratively to reduce falls.
So today I'm going to talk to you about an initiative which is collaborative between ourselves, the Yorkshire Ambulance Service, and the City Council's Citywide Alarm Service. This is part of a national incentive where to address and reduce the need for ambulances where people have low-acuity falls, that somebody who's fallen in their own home or in a community setting, there's no obvious sign of injury, however, the first call is made to 999. So what we were... Nationally, it was that there were a high number of calls coming in for an ambulance, and as the algorithms work those through, the people who were waiting for those calls were getting what we call pushed down that stack. So as we all know, the ambulance service works on the algorithm, so when they answer the phone and they ask if the patient's breathing, that determines then the level of risk that they are monitoring throughout that call, and it goes up and down as they're checking with the callers. So in Sheffield, to try and address some of the numbers, what we looked at was how we could use our citywide call alarm to respond to some of those calls. They already pick up calls from people who've got a community alarm, and we hear those referred to as a pendant. So somebody's falls in their own home, they pull the pendant, and the falls response team are dispatched, they attend, and then once on-site, they do a dynamic risk assessment of that individual, the circumstances, and is that safe to lift. Then normally, the response time for the citywide care alarms is under 15 minutes, so it's really, really rapid. There's citywide cover that is 24/7, and obviously, they do, they all do, also do wellbeing checks, so that's when people have fallen. They refer into pathways for falls prevention, so if someone's a repeat faller, they've got a pathway into our falls prevention team, and we're doing some work with community teams around how we can increase awareness and training for staff around whether or not that is what we call a mechanical fall, did they trip over something, or is that attributed to something around medication and so on and so on. So that's a little bit of background, what we've been doing. Moving forward, what we did is roll out a model called PUSH. The PUSH model is a national incentive, it's looking at getting the right care to the person at the right time, and to reduce that conveyance to hospital. So national evidence shows that one-third of adults over 65 who live at home will have at least one fall a year, will all experience falls at some stage of our life, but most of us fall and there's no serious injury. For people who are older, frailer, or have got multiple conditions, that can be a little bit more complicated. So it was set up to support the low-acuity falls, and that's for individuals who would often be conveyed due to a long lay. A long lay is anyone over two hours, and that, again, is because there can be complications for that individual, particularly around if they've been on the floor for any length of time. So I'll run you through very quickly what happens. So the referral comes in, that comes into the 999 call centre, the algorithm determines what level of call that is, and that call is then pushed to our response team. The response team is set up on the back of the citywide alarm model, so it's 24/7 every day, Monday to Friday, all year. They can respond within 20 minutes, they've got lifting equipment, they've got slide sheets, they get an address, they're deployed, they get into that home, and then, again, exactly the same model, they look at whether or not there's any obvious sign of injury. The assurance on this is that when they're in the property, the call is not dropped from the stack, so the ambulance service holds that call until the team are assured that they can do a safe lift, or actually take the call, so that's called a retrieve. So they retrieve that call and they deal with it on-site. So just running through some statistics, since we started this, it was an incremental step-up. First rolled out eight-wire eight, then rolled out 8am while 11pm, and then it went to 24 hours a day. So since that started in May 23, they've attended 423 calls, and that has been where they have successfully lifted someone who has not required attendance to hospital, and has not attended an ambulance on-site. This year, since the 4th of January to the end of November, the team have done 293. So again, we've had, of that, we're significantly seeing the messaging getting out, and it's increasing, so there's a lot more confidence in the system that they can pick up these calls. So moving forward, we, you know, tested that in people's homes, as of next Monday, that's rolling out to care homes. So again, that will mean that the citywide response... So again, that will mean that the citywide response can go into a care home where the care home rang for an ambulance. Often we see people conveyed from a care home, again, due to the long lay. Or because the staff in the care home at that time are dealing with multiple requests, multiple falls. And obviously they're spreading the staff across floors. So their ability to be able to stay with somebody or actually do the lift themselves as a single person is quite difficult. So the offer from citywide alarm and the system working together is that they will attend first. So it'll come through automated. Just as we've set it up, they'll attend, they'll do the dynamic assessment. They'll either observe a lift, they'll use the equipment, they'll hold on the vehicles. Or they will make a decision whether or not that needs to be upgraded. So from Monday, that will be in all community settings such as supported housing, extra care housing. And all residential and nursing settings. We've not any idea how many that will be at the moment. And the reason for that is because when the addresses come into the ambulance service, it comes in as a domestic address. So the ambulance service don't know whether that's a care home or whether that's somebody's home. So we're trying to get down to that granular detail so we can code that and make sure we can identify what address that is going to. On the back of that, what that will also mean is we can see where we're experiencing more falls in certain homes, certain environments. So whether or not then there's a need for additional training and support. So a very, very quick gallup through, quite a detailed system approach to falls. The wider approach to falls, as when Martin said when I come and talk about falls, I said which part because it's very, very big. There's lots of work happening in terms of the community initiatives, in terms of admission avoidance. And again, that is around addressing people's individual circumstances. And that's also working with voluntary sector partners. So we're about to roll out next year some work with community therapy around some approaches to supporting people moving through care home settings such as coming from hospital into a care home where they're identified as high risk of falls and whether or not we can look at reducing that. So it's not when they fall, it's making sure that there's a low risk of injury from a fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, Sharon. Really good to hear what's going on behind the targets. I think I'm always much more interested in that than the actual target itself. So Angela Nix, I think it was, and then Sinja, then Greg.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Sharon and Martin, for indulging. I think this kind of report is much more useful to us as a, you know, although we need to see the targets. But because the targets are externally kind of set, it makes much more sense to look at the trends in the city or whether we're improving whatever, you know, NHS England wants as tick boxes for their own exercises. So I suggest that moving forward, we have this at the front of our reports. And then have, you know, the things that we have to approve because we have to do that kind of governance thing separately. It would also be good to see it on a graph, how it goes up and down, especially because the targets change every year. So for example, the avoidable admission, Martin, how long a discussion did we have about that? The target has gone up to, you know, because the trend was going up. So it would be good to see it on a graph if that is possible, you know, in the long term. But it's, I just have a specific question about falls. Does the figure for the falls, both the target and the, you know, the actual figure only include falls at home or in a community setting? Or does it include admission to A and E's for people say that have slipped on the pavement? Because the pavement was icy or there were leaves. And is it possible to capture data for specific days where the weather might be inclement? I'm asking this question, it's a very specific question because we talk about prevention, but then we don't grit pavements. And I wonder whether, you know, we could do some prevention by actually investing in adding something to the contracts that we may have with some big providers for gritting pavements. So I know that someone who lives in my own house slipped on pavement on a particular day, didn't get hurt. But I got, and all of us as councillor, we got loads of emails and messages on a particular day last month. People that have fallen or nearly fallen someone they knew had fallen. And it just makes you think how difficult would it be? I mean, it's not difficult, but it's expensive. But how much money would he actually save and how much less grief would, you know, and stress and hurt would bring people? So I was wondering whether, one, does the figure only apply to falls in the home, which I'm so glad to hear, our city alarm visited fantastic service. But yeah, those are my little queries.
So the Better Care Fund target is emergency admissions due to falls for 65 plus. So that's, they could have fallen anywhere effectively, but that's a number of, and it says a rate in terms of how many people will fall in. But from citywide alarms, I think they capture every fall.
Yeah, so the response, the citywide response is for everybody. And I think the issue, we talk at length about the coded when people go to hospital. So sometimes the admission might, the reason for the ambulance and the convey might have been the fall. But actually the admission was related to something else, but it's how it's coded when someone is admitted. So primary reason, but it may have not been the ultimate reason they have the admission. But the data we are measured on is for over 65.
Can I rephrase my question? Just quickly. So is it possible for whatever accident emergency is called this day? Do they record how a person has fallen? I don't really care how old they are. And can we get numbers for specific dates? Is that something that is possible to do? And should we do that so that we can prevent people from falling on pavements because of leaves or eyes? It's a very specific question because people are getting hurt when the weather is not good because we're not gritting.
Be worth having a look, Martin. I'm not sure A and E record that detail. I mean, they'll record the age of the individual, but, and it will be within the history part of it. I'm not sure whether that will be recorded as effectively a code that could be picked up, but we can maybe look at it. Sharon? Greg?
You can't. It's not coded. Age of person, possibly where they fell, but I doubt that in A and E, to be honest. It'd be possible to do some of it by linking a whole bunch of data sets together. I would be interested in doing it, but not the type of fall. So I'll pick some of that up later. So I do think it's worth a look, but the specifics, no, it can't be done.
It depends what, I think you can very easily see peaks in demand coming through for different pathways when the weather is bad. So that, you know, the recent weather, we had much more pressure on our orthopedic pathway to respond to some of the injuries that people were having. I think coding to the specifics of why and how is probably a huge amount of work that doesn't deliver the value in return. But I think we could look at, you could very easily match weather patterns and match it back to what we're seeing in terms of demand at the front door. And it's very clear that when we have really adverse weather, that has an impact on accidents and falls. But a different type of falls than I think the ones you're trying to reduce through this work.
Sharon, do you want to go?
Yeah, so the data set that we're putting together for these interventions are looking at the time, time of day, dates. And we've talked today about whether or not we need to capture those patterns over time, whether, you know, winter, because people don't put lights on, fall in their own home. So we'll have a richness of data that comes from this that will break down. We're just trying to extract that because it's, as the ambulance service record the request for assistance. We've got to pull that out separately, but we will have some rich data coming from this as we're moving forward.
Could maybe look at, I mean, I'm guessing if you just compared like a summer month and then, or a summer couple of days and then a couple of really bad winter days, it might give you a feeling for it, Sinja?
As I say, you can just sit on the day. I remember seeing a run chart a number of years ago and it was like this. And it literally just spiked like that and it was black ice Wednesday. And it was, you know, everyone was falling over, went outside. So I don't think you need to compare it to summer. You could just literally compare it the day before and the day after. You know, you'd see the spike in orthopeds, whatever.
Brilliant. Did you want to come in?
So great to hear all the falls work, Sharon, and all parts of the system that are involved in that. And it's just to make the point that the people who are helped, I mean, I'm going to describe it in organisational terms, which I don't like to do. But it's not just that they would have gone to A and E, some of them because they'd have then had a long lie, would have gone in ill. They'd have missed their medication, you know, they had Parkinson's, et cetera, and they would have been admitted, et cetera. So it's not just that they've avoided attendance at A and E. I think it's quite important to pick that up. And then Martin and I struggle not to smile when describing the reasons for admission. And because we had the clinical review beforehand and, you know, so the COPD being the top. But it's really important that data is used to support, but not to drive the way systems are designed because often people would have just called them off legs. You know, they're just, their fragility had just slightly tipped and they're unable to, the things that look after at home failed and they came in and they would have had, you know, multi-mobility, they had COPD, she had hypertension listed there, which is not a reason for admission. It's extremely rarely. And I think it's just to make that point that it's helpful. But if we were to say, oh, the COPD thing is to solve, oh, let's do spirometry, let's do pulmonary rehabilitation, as if that will stop all those admissions. It's not. It's a much broader thing that we need like that, like the North East neighbourhood work. That's really where it's at for those admissions.
Yeah, thanks, Sinja. I was going to say, we did an audit many years ago where we looked at respiratory admissions. And only about 20% of them were actually admitted because of a respiratory condition. They were admitted usually due to frailty or falls or whatever, but happened to have a respiratory condition that was then put as a diagnosis. And a good example of that was the hypertension. I mean, I think 8% of our admissions in Sheffield are hypertension. There's no way that, you know, I guess maybe your blood pressure goes up if you're waiting in an ambulance for a while outside A and E. But you're not going to have that number of admissions due to hypertension. So I think you've got to be really careful, you know, you end up actually just putting a diagnosis in, because you'd have to put something. But that might not be the reason that, you know, we work within a system that very, very easily you get hairs racing in the wrong direction because of some of this data. So it's just really important that we understand it and spend a bit of time trying to do that. I think Greg was next.
Cheers. Three thoughts. One, notwithstanding Sinja and Zach's point, which I do agree with, the COPD, top two SIs, tobacco and hardest pressed primary community care, resource wise, let's not run away from that fact. So that does matter. Easy for me to say, hard to enact, I know, but I will say that again and again and again. We may get some shift of that eventually. But a specific question, Martin, reflect on it, come back to it. I'm hearing from other parts of the country that Better Care Fund is being eyed up for and in some places actually subverted towards more acute demands. That isn't the point of the Better Care Fund. Just reflect and tell me at some point that isn't the case in South Yorkshire or Sheffield in particular. I'm hoping not, just to be clear. And thirdly, Sharon, that was an amazing story. Thank you. I think targets have been now relegated to second, second to story, sorry, Martin. It was a really good description of the kind of a response to a fall rather than a prevention of a fall. And I'll see you after class because I'd be dead keen to see the whole of the system. But just on the story you told about the response to a fall. Has the work been done on the sort of, maybe slightly speculatively, the downstream consequences of that averted? Because they would be significant, I suspect. Has someone done that work?
And I think some of it as well is around how do we, how do we ensure that we put the right, I don't want to say service, but support behind that as well. Because what we've found is that when people, you'll know this, when people experience a fall, they take less risk. But often those less risks can lead to other falls and other consequence. So again, at the moment, what's interesting is some of our lead occupational therapists and colleagues have a view that, you know, we, often you cannot remove the risk of a fall. Especially for people who are frail and elderly, it's almost, it will happen at some stage. It's how we reduce that impact. And interestingly, when we've been asking people who've experienced a fall, whether or not they want a referral to chat to someone else about, you know, looking around the house, how we can just, there's still a reluctance to take that up. There's a nervousness about people getting over the threshold still. And we've got a low take up of the citywide alarm option afterwards. So we're doing some work on that. We thought that if they'd experienced a fall and then we'd talk them through how they didn't have to go through an ambulance, they could have had a pull cord, you know, that sort of thing. There's still a very low take up. So that's some work we're doing with the local authority to see how we can maximise that. But yeah, definitely a nervousness around what happens after that initial intervention. So yeah, Greg, it'd be great to catch up.
Brilliant, thank you. I think it was Judy next and then I think probably call it to close.
Thank you. I'm being sort of nosy really, but these two points might be connected. Just looking at the table here, financial table, looking at the underspend on people keeping well in their local community, thinking about that. And I've been just note why that is. And just wondering whether some of the prevention work that's even further back, walking groups and armchair gyms and people coming in and checking houses, whether that is within the purview of that fund. And we are, those connected.
Yep, that's absolutely fine. I'll get the breakdown of the differences. It is a subset of a full budget. So there's only some of the community support workers and some of the elements in there. So it's not the full breadth in people keeping well in terms of what the services included. But I've got, I can provide the breakdown of exactly what's in there. That's part of the Section 75 review. And we're looking at what is in each scheme and what's doing it.
Which adds to the underspend. That's what I don't get.
I will find out what, it may have been overspent in another area because it's a subset. I'll get the full size, but in terms of, and in the finance bit, it does say that we're over by about 7.4 million in terms of, and that is mainly around LD and mental health packages that have increased against the budget. Just for information, if people wondered why it is. But like I say, it's a subset of a bigger budget. So some areas will be overspent in other areas that may offset it. So I'll provide a better financial update for next time. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Martin, Sharon.
There's not much of it in the Better Care Fund currently.
Right, okay. Could it be?
It could be. And that's part of that Section 75 review where we say, what's in each line, what are we getting, what are the outcomes? Should we tie this again? Because it was created in 2015, so it needs an overhaul. And we need to look at all the services we've got now and say, do they meet the 10-year strategy? Do we want them in our Better Care? That's part of the update we'll provide next time.
Because it just struck me as a community organisation saying, we'll bring the alarm people with you to visit your house. Might get them in in a way that it wouldn't otherwise.
Great, thank you. Really good just to note the report, but also to have that slightly more in-depth discussion, I think has been really helpful. And just thinking how it evolves into the future and that upstream thing that we keep talking about. But, you know, great to hear all this stuff. So thanks, Martin, Sharon. Really appreciate it. Okay, so next section is on Homes, Health and Wellbeing. So we've got presentation. If Helen and colleagues maybe want to just introduce themselves, then we'll go through the presentation and have some questions and comments.
Good afternoon, colleagues. I'm Chris Ellison. I'm the interim director of Housing at Sheffield City Council.
Hi, everybody. Helen Watson. I'm an acting public health consultant in the public health team with the lead for Homes, Health and Wellbeing. Apologies that I'm a bit croaky. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Oh, hello. Ruth Ward, Strategic Housing, Sheffield City Council.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Allen and I'm the head of Citywide Housing Services for Sheffield City Council.
Welcome. Thank you.
So I'm going to kick us off. Hopefully you'll see in the paper. So I'm going to kick us off. Hopefully you'll see in the paper. Good homes are absolutely fundamental for good health and wellbeing. We know that poor housing conditions harm health and shorten lives. We know that we face very significant housing challenges that impact on the health and wellbeing of people in Sheffield. And it's really vital to implement interventions to improve affordability, security, quality and sustainability of homes in the city. The newly published Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan reiterates the importance of everyone having a decent affordable home if we want to achieve our citywide ambition of closing unfair gaps and making quality of life. And this is one of the five priority areas for this first year of implementing the plan, where you as the board have identified that you can add value and have impact. And that's why this item is on the agenda today. So the focus of the paper and what we'll be sharing is really to answer the question, well, how can you as the board support progress? To ensure that everyone in Sheffield has a decent affordable home. So we're not going to be presenting lots of good work just for information. We're really trying to lay out for you some clear asks for you as a collective and as representatives of member organisations and sectors about how you can move this agenda forwards in the city. So that means we're not going to focus in great detail on specific housing issues, but try and keep the discussion really about the strategic role of the board in helping the city to move forward to greater collaborative and tangible action. Before we get started, I want to acknowledge that the development of the paper has been a really collaborative effort. You can see the list of people at the beginning of the paper who have all contributed, both different colleagues within the council and across different partner organisations. Just as a reminder about the context for the work, so the link between housing and health has been a fundamental component of the two previous health and wellbeing strategies in the city. But in 2022, it was felt that there hadn't really been an opportunity to dig deeper, just the surface had only really been scratched in terms of the agenda and the issues. So the board at that time convened a housing and health summit to dig into what are those issues and understand how we could come together to try and address them. Following the summit, there was an expectation that there would be a task and finish group who would be established to take forward that work and return to the boards with updates. But that didn't pan out as expected. However, lots of other things have been happening since that time. And the paper gives you a broad overview of some of the good work that relates to those original recommendations. Is it possible? Oh, so there's a slide there. So just to say that there is now a real opportunity for the board as a collective and yourselves as member organisations and sectors to build on those pockets of good work that we've seen in the city. And to harness the energy enthusiasm that there is about this topic and to build on the wealth of insight that there is about the key priorities from lots of different collective conversations that have happened since July 22. And to really proactively bring partners across the city together to move forwards together. And that's what this image on the slide is trying to get at, becoming more than the sum of our parts by aligning our efforts really strategically. So to do that, we need to make sure we have a shared understanding about why homes really matter for health and wellbeing, a shared commitment to prioritising and resourcing the work. With each partner doing their part, working together, sharing responsibility for following through on those commitments, being open and honest about progress, where the challenges are and supporting each other where needed. So the first ask of the board is for members to champion and embed a clear narrative, so a shared clear story about why homes matter for health and wellbeing. Within the individual organisations and sectors that you represent. Next, we're asking that you would ensure that the organisations and sectors that you represent are really clear on what is your role? And what are you willing to take responsibility for in relation to homes, health and wellbeing? We're asking that you commit to resourcing the work, which includes making sure that there's somebody named within the organisation or sector to lead on the work and to liaise with other partners regarding this agenda. Then we're asking you to commit to focusing together on the priorities that have already been identified, to endorse the new housing strategy for the city. So this is about coming together to put our shared energies into delivering the key ambitions that Chris, Suzanne and Ruth will talk about more in terms of the housing strategy vision and ambitions in a moment. We're also asking you to ensure that the sectoral organisation you represent fully participates in partnership spaces in the city to work on those priorities together. Those might be pre-existing spaces or forums and working groups that emerge in relation to delivering on the new housing strategy and its ambitions. And again, colleagues will give some more details about that in a minute. And the last thing that you will have noticed in the paper is the role of the board in providing challenge and guidance to make sure that the right work is happening at the right geographical level. Because we know there's lots of enthusiasm as well at a regional level, particularly amongst the ICS, SIMCA, the South Yorkshire Housing Partnership. So we want to make sure that we're adequately engaged with and influencing those work streams, but making sure that effort is being spent at the right level where the most value can be added. So that we're avoiding duplication and delay because there's confusion over responsibility. And I know that Greg is going to mention a few words on that later too. So I'll hand over first to you, Chris, to kick off on the housing strategy.
Thank you. So yeah, so we're here to really give you an overview of what that new housing strategy looks like. That's a strategy for all residents of Sheffield. So just for clarity, I have a specific role around the affordable and social housing within the authority, but also the overall strategy came from my area of the council as well. Obviously after a lot of consultation with a lot of other people. It is an outline, we are developing sort of further governance and delivery proposals on this. And as Helen mentioned, it really is about how we can work together on those joint priorities. So in essence, how we describe this, we're on slide three, if that helps. There we go. In essence, how we, within the council, describe this strategy is a tier one strategy, which sets out, as I say, the housing ambitions for the authority. That means it sits within, underneath the overall corporate strategy and aligns itself with all those plans, goals and ambitions that sit within that corporate strategy. Colleagues will go into a bit more detail about what's covered in there. But below this policy is what we call our tier two and our more detailed action plans. And they include things around housing growth. They also include how we deal with temporary accommodation and our sleeping issues, supported housing. So there's a whole series of other tier two strategies that sit below this. So there is a clear golden thread that goes through all of those that you have an opportunity to contribute to. So that was all I was going to say in terms of an overview. I'll hand over to Suzanne.
Thank you very much. So I think listening into the previous discussion, that's why housing, health and care matter together. Because it has to be collaborative to sort out the issues that people have got and deal with the priorities for our residents, talking about trips and falls and so forth. You know, housing has got a really big role in helping to address that. Why won't someone cooperate with care alarm system? Trusted person from a housing service can support that work. So it is that kind of cross collaboration. And the housing strategy is there because we are responsible as a council for setting the strategic direction, articulating what the requirements are in the city. But it is a delivery strategy with partners. It can only work together. And we've talked about homes, it's more than homes, it's services, it's communities that people live in, they feel safe and secure. So it isn't a bricks and mortar issue only. I won't go into great detail because I think the most important thing is that you get a chance to talk about it, about how we make more use of the great work that's already started and build on that. So the strategy's got five key ambitions, which are about more homes and choice, reducing carbon emissions to net zero by 2030, which again, obviously is really important for health and wellbeing. Providing safe, good quality and comfortable homes for everybody and making sure the area that people live in is a great place to call home. And again, the other, the number five, so these aren't a running order, they're all equally important, is about homes and housing services that will end homelessness. Because if you haven't got home, then you are in the worst position to have good health and wellbeing and support healthy and independent lives. So in my view, all of those ambitions are really relevant to health and wellbeing, but we could particularly look around ambition three about good quality homes. And ambition five, where housing, health and care must come together to support independent living. Again, I'm not going to go into great detail because you have had the report from Helen, which we've collaborated on as well as the slide pack. So how do we deliver together? Well, it looks quite dry and it is just in our pack to help you understand that Chris mentioned how we as a council described tier one, tier two and tier three. But that's our internal focus. So actually, it's about how we work in partnership together. There's lots of other forums like this one, where partners are coming together to support that agenda and what those key things need to be. So for me, the important thing is how we get on and do things together and how we can collaborate, doing the things that are residents' most valued, most important for them. And that's where, in our housing strategy work, there's been lots of consultation with organisations, but more importantly for me, with the people of Sheffield, to tell us what they think is important for them and how we can help them deliver on that. So many, there are many programmes and projects that will support the delivery of the strategy. It's a 10 year one. And it covers everything from building stuff, which takes a long time, to commissioning services, to supporting better pathways, referrals. And most importantly from that, outcomes, so that we're doing things together rather than siloed alongside each other. We do have, as Helen mentioned, a number of existing forums and panels, boards already. And I think we have to be open and honest about, do they work hard enough in this space? Is there anything we need to do differently to make them most effective and that we don't duplicate efforts or cause confusion either for ourselves or for the people of Sheffield about who's doing what and how it can most effectively be done? I'm really keen, because it can look quite dry when you talk about all these boards and so forth, to make sure as we go forward, there is genuine co-production with residents of Sheffield in designing services that actually meet their requirements, rather than organisations saying, it suits us to do it in this way. Because that won't tackle and deal with the fundamental challenges and opportunities that people have. So what we're asking you to consider today is, you know, does the strategy look right to you? Is this is right? Lots of people in your organisations have been involved in it. How can we collaborate on achieving those ambitions? Make sure that where it's appropriate for you, that you are able and we enable you to be involved in the delivery. So if we're doing things that you think that don't work, please tell us and we can look at how we can do better. Use your individual and collective strengths to heighten awareness about this work and take the opportunities to take it forward. Helping to influence and unblock where you can. Look at how we can jointly pool resources more effectively. And we just talked about the Better Care Fund, which I was involved in the design of that many years ago. And it's right to have a look at it again and see what context we're now working in and what can we do better. And make sure where we do have those groups that are already existing, they've got a clear link in and mandate from boards like yourself to say, actually, you're working together. Are you working on the priorities that are going to most effectively deliver on the big issues for us? So that there is that two-way relationship. So really, it's about asking you, based on what we've said and the reports you've had, what you think and how we can all work better together.
Thanks, Suzanne. Greg, I completely forgot when I told you that you didn't sit up here that I'd asked you to talk about the regional work. Are you happy to say a few words?
I'm going to cry for very long about it. Just that there is a regional context to this. There is a South Yorkshire Housing Partnership, which is largely but not exclusively social landlord led partnership, pretty essential actually, because we need to work in partnership with social landlords. Have established a partnership, it's called South Yorkshire Housing Partnership. There is a housing and health work stream within the partnership. Work stream may be too strong a word for it. It's a group of interested and very, very willing people from across health and housing sectors. And I think it's meeting now. I think the meeting started about eight minutes ago. HACT, you will remember, did the work in Sheffield or in 2022, the reference to their report is referenced in the pack, have just done a review and refresh of the South Yorkshire work for us. There was a set of five workshops and a summit and recent conversation in the Integrated Care Partnership. There's a lot of interest and enthusiasm. We need to work out how we resource that at a South Yorkshire level. And there's a little bit of a South Yorkshire place tension, maybe not quite the right word, but there is a tension of how, what's our primacy level of geography here? But broadly, the areas of focus are specialised and supported housing, housing homelessness prevention, trips and falls, damp and mould, preventing admissions and ensuring suitable accommodation and social prescribing. Many of which will be very, very pertinent in Sheffield as well, hence the geography tension. But there are multiple levels of geography in play in this one. I, here and everywhere else actually, I primarily subservient to Sheffield.
Brilliant. Anything else?
I'll hand back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I think, I won't go through all the asks because I'm a bit croaky too, but it was the question, I think, is around how can we support? There was a question of accountability. I think the gist of it is around how we can use our considerable influence as a board to support this work and probably put a bit of challenge into other parts of the system if needed. So I think that probably sums up the ask today. Angela?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much for that. Really, you know, I remember the conference we had a couple of years ago was very interesting and the conversation was really kind of deep. And there were so many people there, so many people from different organisations. I think whilst the housing, the new housing strategy is super important because we are in dire need of more housing in Sheffield of lots of different types. I think for us as a board, I think it's important to think about homes rather than houses. Because whilst the, you know, the physical, you know, roof over your head is important, it's what is a home. And as a member, I can tell you that kind of about 80% of the casework that I get is about housing. And often it's about people being made ill by housing because there is mould or because there is infestation that they can't get rid of. Or because it's not suitable and therefore the children are ill and the parents are getting mentally ill because they are stressed. So I think that's why it's so important. So it's for all of us to do our job properly. So as Sheffield City Council and as a member for Sheffield City Council, we as an authority need to do everything in our power to ensure that homes are fit for their, you know, houses are fit for their purpose, being a home. But also it's not just the physical four walls, it's also what's around, they're feeling safe, you know, green spaces. Feeling at home is more than having four walls around you. So I think this is really important. But it's also, you know, from the point of view of the health system, if someone is admitted to hospital, because say for example, they've got asthma that is caused by mould in the house. When we discharge them, if we discharge them to the same place, it's actually not the right thing to do. And how do we address, and how do we work together to make sure that, you know, people can go back to a safe environment where they feel comfortable? So, you know, in terms of that prevention that we always talk about. So thank you very much for this and thank you for reminding us of the work that we started a long time ago.
Thank you. Greg and then Judy.
Thanks, Zach. So thank you. Positively endorse, strongly endorse all the recommendations with very, very affirmative language. There's a little bit of kind of keep on doing what we keep on doing moderately well. Sometimes we might get it wrong. So when we do get it wrong, let's fess up about that. Completely support, focus the sort of, they've gone, but the set of asks and expectations that are on the slide and we should take it as read and if anyone shouts now, the board endorses that. So dear colleagues, you've got a few minutes to shout. There's something about kind of operational integration across health, care, housing. Are the right people in the right rooms at the right time? And if not, our job is to ease. And if not, our job is to ease the pain and facilitate the, the unblocking blocks and all that kind of stuff. Co-located staff, shared intelligence, all that kind of stuff. Easy to say, sometimes hard to enact. Our job is to do that. There's a little bit of health in all policies. Housing itself is a pretty critical determinant of health and probably do okay on that, but maybe we could do more. And a little bit of sort of health-led focus on housing when we prioritise repairs and retrofit and work on cold homes and the like. Do we do that with a health-led focus or a property-led focus? And there'd be some trade-offs in that one and sort of the, how will we do that? And I don't know. But, but for me, strongly endorse everything. They ask and we'll pick it up outside, are the right people involved in the right meetings? And if not, we'll go and stare at folk and twist their arms and whatnot.
Judy?
Yeah, just wanted to pick up the point you made about co-production. I mean, I endorse everything that people have just said. The co-production point and the new planning arrangements that are hovering into view, how are we going to balance those? And where's the communication about that? Because it seems to me that that's an absolute minefield and I don't see anything about that hard reality that we may have to face.
And I'm going to take the first two and then hand to colleagues with those, is that okay? Completely agree with you. Yes, that's why we tied the paper homes, not housing, because absolutely it is more than just the bricks and mortar. And I think the role of the board, as Greg says, in terms of getting the right people in the right spaces to work together to make those changes, that's absolutely what we need you to do. And also to, to do that work of really, what does it mean for your organisation or sector? What is your, what is your contribution? And embedding that so that, so that we don't just scratch the surface and then have to circle back again at a later day, that would be really valuable to colleagues who want to talk about the third point.
Go on.
The new information from the government about planning is new and I would defer to other colleagues who are responsible for the work around Sheffield City Future, which is actually my colleague here, Kate Martin, if she wanted to comment on that now.
Thank you for that and thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, actually, I was going to come in anyway and just to affirm our support around the housing strategy. We know that safe, warm and secure homes are important and can deliver significant impact in terms of our health, health outcomes. And I would fully endorse this and recommend this also to the board in terms of a partnership. We have an opportunity as we look forward to think about our housing needs for the future, both in economic terms but also in social and community terms moving forward. Sheffield is an accelerator area for housing growth as one of 20 cities across the UK and therefore we actually have the opportunity for further inward investment support and enabling and capacity support to bring forward a range of homes, both public, private, affordable and independent living accommodation over the medium term of this plan. And we know that that will provide for our existing and changing populations and communities now, but also moving forward as we plan for new or our future communities. The links back into some of the new planning opportunities. This council is currently working on its local plan. It's just been through its second round of inspection and will be responding to the national updates around planning guidance as we move forward and into the new year, as we finalise our own spatial plan. But we know that that guidance will provide a range of opportunities, flexibilities to enable more homes in the places and the geographies that we need across the city to meet our longer-term housing needs and aspirations well for the future. That's clearly, clearly going to support our joint commissioning work and also our, our longer-term planning and community health outcomes.
Great, thank you. Fiona, did you?
So this cuts across multiple research centres and subject areas that we deliver at Sheffield Hallowen University. And I'm sure you're already linked in with some colleagues at the university already. I think it would be good outside of the meeting if I could just get an understanding of who you are linked in with so I can make sure that you are cutting across as many of the different areas that would be of, of benefit to engage with this as possible. So that would be my ask back, back to you if we could do that so we can support as much as possible.
That would be really appreciated. We do have some links, but yeah, really happy to have that conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. So I think people are happy to support. I'm not hearing anyone saying that they feel they can't, so thank you and we'll hopefully get updates on a fairly regular basis. Thanks. So I'm going to move on to Growth Plan and I think that's Kate that's going to present. So maybe just introduce yourselves again and then we could have a presentation and then take it from there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So Kate Martin, Exec Director, City Futures, Sheffield City Council.
And I'm Jen Rickard, Economic Policy Officer at Sheffield City Council.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to talk to the report that's in front of the board today. Today we're setting out the Sheffield Growth Plan 2025 to 2035. And I had the opportunity today to talk a little bit more around the plan, its development during 2024 and some of the engagement work that we've undertaken as part of this plan. Then to focus on the key missions and the key priorities that are coming out of the plan and talk a little bit more around our future next steps. And then the recommendations well to the board today. So in front of you, as part of our work, we have the Sheffield Growth Plan. This has been developed, as I said, over the last 12 months through a, a number of phases of development, including a first growth framework that was endorsed by the Council Strategy and Resources Committee in 2024. And this framework set out the principles for developing this plan moving forward. And then during the latter part of the year and over the summer, we have worked with a range of partners and stakeholders to bring forward the plan that you have in front of you today. And my colleague Jen will talk a little bit more around some of that engagement process and how partners have been involved in the development of the plan. As you'll see from the report, this is a draft 10-year plan for growth for Sheffield. And within the content of the report, it sets out how the plan aligns to support, enable and complement the fair and healthy Sheffield plan as well and making those, those links into our longer-term partnerships and this board's remit. In terms of our priorities, through the engagement and through the work that we've undertaken, this economic plan sets out four key missions for the city and the strategic framework for growth. Those missions are for our economy, growing green and, sorry, growing green, global, growing and green, let's get my teeth in there, global, growing and green, growing our neighbourhoods together, celebrating and growing a vibrant culture and creative Sheffield and a city on the move, connected with the infrastructure to grow. And, and these key missions have been collaborated and brought together, linked to evidence and information through a very detailed consultation process over the last 12 months. And I'll draw on Jen to talk a little bit more about that process and then we'll talk about how this links with our, our future joint work.
Thanks, Kate. Yeah, so a lot of this process, we took a lot of learning from the City Goals process. In fact, I think I was maybe here about a year ago or so to talk to you about that. And a lot of insight into the kind of value of, of co-production and trying to cast as wide a net as possible when you're speaking to, speaking to people. So as Kate said, we started off with developing a growth framework at the start of the year and that involved us working with over 65 stakeholders through one-to-ones plus eight workshops, which included workshops with the voluntary and community sector. But we also spoke to public sector partners, businesses, developers and politicians as well. So this growth framework then went through, went through for approval in March. We then drafted a, having got that kind of political approval, we then drafted a, a version that we then took out in the autumn to another set of stakeholders, particularly networks and groups that included the universities. We spoke to Sheffield Youth Cabinet, which was very enjoyable, Chamber Council of Sheffield College. As well as that kind of stakeholder engagement, we also made sure that we were speaking to economic expertise and using business intelligence. So as well as insight from the City Goals research from last year, we also spoke to economists involved in the South Yorkshire Mayor's Economic Advisory Council. And we've also been working closely with elected members, I think to the point where they, they were declining briefings because they were, felt well briefed, which is always a nice position to be in. Since then, all that feedback helped to inform the final plan, which is in front of you. And since then, we've also had quite a few letters of support from various stakeholders to say they appreciate the feedback, that they've seen how the feedback has influenced the final plan. So yes, a kind of really meaningful engagement that has hopefully, has, has made the document much stronger as a result. I'll hand back over to Kate.
Thank you, Jen. And so I'd like to place on record, thank you for health and wellbeing partners and networks that have fed into the consultation stages and engagement that Jen sets out. As you can see, moving forward, in the latter part of the report, it sets out how we want to move forward, including the next phase of this particular piece of work, which is around drawing together a Sheffield investment plan through an investment compact and that will set out initially a five-year view in terms of the current investment coming into the city in partnership, as well as leverage investment and to support the growth propositions that are set out in the document. That will also identify areas of investment that we have under representation at the moment and a range of partnerships or opportunities about how we can increase funding support and collaboration in some areas to deliver the objectives of the plan. Moving forward, we know that this plan can play a huge role, as I said, in complementing, enabling and supporting health and wellbeing for the medium term. And we are keen to ensure that this board supports the growth plan, the partnership and the next steps of this, of this opportunity and this joint approach. We'd also like to work with the board to continue the conversations around how we focus on some of the key outcomes within the growth plan. In particular, you know, we've just spoken around the city's housing strategy and you can see in this growth plan that growing our neighbourhoods, hoods together is one of the key priorities as part of that plan. And so healthy homes, travel, walking, engagement, employment, participation and the livability of our city clearly will have transformational impacts now and longer term across the city. And this growth plan seeks to secure and complement those other pieces of joint work and the Health and Wellbeing Board's work as well. So, so today we'd like to discuss around how the Health and Wellbeing Board can support us and seek your strategic endorsement for this plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? Go on, Greg.
So it's been endorsed everywhere, taken down as read. This clearly matters to Sheffield PLC, it clearly matters from a sort of a social, social outcome, social justice perspective. Healthy population is critically important for growth and vice versa, they're symbiotic and I think that's nailed in the, the plan to be honest. There's something about the, the healthy population bit, that's the fair and healthy Sheffield plan, the end, doesn't do that. And yeah, that's, that's this board's responsibility, the end. There's something about that there are many roles for NHS stakeholders in some of this. There's the health on the high street thing, the long-term planning of facilities, the health and care sector is a critical part of the foundational economy. There's the anchor mission thing, there's the med tech digital thing. Colleagues have got to kick balls through those goals, but the growth plan delivers the opportunity for the goals to be there. But you, we've all got to work out how we kick balls through those goals. This definitely isn't the stuff of the core mission of the NHS is to, to the waiting list stuff, but it is the fourth aim of the integrated care system. So I think, I, I'm not going to do that, but, but colleagues in NHS, you'll need to think about how you do some of that stuff because it's a massive, wide-open goal and a big opportunity. So I don't know the simple, simple pithy answers to that one, but it is a 10-year plan and we've got 10 years to, to kick some balls through the goals. One specific question, if I may, and apologies if I missed it in the, in the stuff. What's the sort of the governance point of this? What's the anchorage point? Clearly it's a council-owned thing, but is it, is there a board that's responsible for, for this?
Thank you, Greg. So as Jen said, the overarching strategy six within, within our Sheffield Stronger Together and our City Goals work and under, under the mission and that addresses growth as part of that, we are working through now in terms of drawing together the governance for the 10-year plan and the delivery mechanisms for, for some of the existing work that we're already doing and some of, some of that future work. So that's where we would see that activity and that collaboration, drawing on a number of networks and partnerships across the city to input into that. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't expect I'm saying anything that Alexis hasn't said before, but I can see so the question around how partners around the table can contribute to it, there's some really clear alignment, I think, with the adult care and wellbeing ambitions, particularly around the good jobs with better access to skills and training in our care academy and making sure that we are skilling up and training people in Sheffield for the roles that we know we're going to need in the future around care and wellbeing. And then thinking about that connection to our neighbourhoods and lifelong opportunities for feeling meaningfully engaged, not only in your neighbourhoods but in your communities of interest and how we're designing our services to help contribute to that. So maybe the point is making sure that we work together to get all of that performance and all that change that we're delivering reflected in this governance as well.
Great. Sorry, Kate next.
Sorry, not meaning to repeat myself, but it's similar to the previous item, I'd be really keen to see who you are linking in with at Sheffield Hallowen so we can make sure we've got the right people or the, the right breadth of people across the university because again, this does cut across many of our different areas of work.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, Sheffield Hallowen have been engaged in the development of a number of phases and we also shared this, the draft growth plan to the senior leadership team there as well, so at the highest levels of engagement. As Jen said, we've shared the draft working plan with a range of groups, partnerships, the universities, including Sheffield Hallowen. As we mobilise and move into the development phases and delivery phases of this plan, then clearly joining together in terms of the key partners and the key individuals that can help us and support us with some of the missions it has set out in the plan is absolutely key. And we'll be sharing a bit more and maybe we can come back to talk to you about that in quarter four next year.
Brilliant, thank you. I think it was Sarah next, then Judy.
Yeah, thank you so much. Really good to see this come together and Greg described really clearly the number of potential overlaps under that anchor institution banner with not only a massive employer as the teaching hospitals in the region, but also we procure lots of services, we spend and buy lots of, of things. And so lots of questions around what the future potential opportunities are for using that anchor institution or locally. So really supportive of this, recognise the important role and contribution that we have to play. I think worth really highlighting that the significance and the importance of the public sector is a, is part of the employment mix and how we promote that. I know there's some of that, particularly in the kind of policy space at the moment, but definitely in health and care with the universities and their strength. I think that's a particular area. that's a particular area of promotion that we can do for the city and link to some of the research and innovation spin-out opportunities there as well. So very supportive. I think my question is both recognising what it is that we already do now and know that we play a contribution, what's the most meaningful way to start to knit some of that together in a more deliberate way as we go forward? And I think there are various different places in which that's happening, some of the anchor institution meetings, which look at some of the overlaps between the health and care research and innovation space, I think is another one of those, but interested in your thoughts about how we most meaningfully have those conversations.
Yeah, really helpful reflections, thank you, Sarah. I think, let's take that workforce issue actually, and the public sector workforce. As you can see in the document and also if you look at the evidence base and some of the economic information that underpins this document, we have set out that health and wellbeing sectors are growth sectors for us. We recognise the key role and that the health sector in its broadest sense plays both for our economy and also for our workforce needs. And this strategy does have the potential also to maybe address areas where we struggle with workforce, to retain and secure new jobs, new roles, also sector challenges that we have around maybe collective across the city, around recruitment areas that we need to focus on in the medium term as well. And so I think it can lend its support to that and there are a range of framework documents that link with this, including the city's skills plan etcetera that will kind of reflect this. Your wider point around health, growth, wellbeing and the economic opportunities is clearly very well made and actually how we grow our health, wellbeing, innovation, assets, research, development, technological capability in this area and how that plays out and supports both our current economy in the health, in the broader sense of the health sector and the future economy and how we may need to flex and evolve over time is all part of this strategy, enabling and complementing some of the work that you're doing through this board.
Thank you. Judy next.
I really like this, it's an exciting strategy. But we know from previous strategies, not just in Sheffield, that you can have economic growth but continuing inequality. And I think the job strategy must be critical to stopping that happening. But I wonder if there are measures and ways that you're thinking about that, so we don't get one thing going here but the other thing going there.
Thank you for that, Judy. It's a really important point. It's the outcomes that really matter, aren't they? And what we're measuring as well, so I really agree with that. You'll see in the document that we've actually agreed five principles for growth and in there, that clearly sets out the type of growth that we want to enable across the city, which is inclusive growth that supports our social and community fabric as well across the city. These are principles that have cross-party support, that were agreed in March and are the key guiding criteria to the types of growth that we want to encourage in the city and maybe the types, a framework of the types of growth that we probably wouldn't want to also encourage in the city. There will be certain types of growth that we actually think that doesn't fit with the fabric of our city or where we're going with our health strategies or where we're going with other plans like the skills strategy etcetera. And so having those guiding principles, they will help us when we look at growth propositions, whether they're skills, whether they're workforce propositions, whether it's around our land and assets and how we bring forward growth across the city. They will be key criteria for us to ensure that the types of growth support the city that we want to be in the future as well as part of that. There is an appendix linked to the main document around some of our early metrics that we hope to monitor and we'll be strengthening that and building that out over the next few months and into the new year to shape that. And maybe we can co-shape some of those jointly with yourselves and with the partners represented in this board as well. Thank you.
Any other comments, Sarah?
Sorry, there's so much we could talk about in this, so just one final comment for me. We haven't talked as much around the mission around connectivity and transport, which I think is really important part of this plan. A lot in the narrative is around how we connect between places. I think there's also, and I would say there's something really important about the number of journeys that happen to and from health places people go for their health. And we know that the travel that we have, for example, to our main hospital sites is a big contributor to pollution in the local area. So thinking about how we plan for some of that and it's been really positive to collaborate with colleagues already on some active travel schemes that are trying to improve some of those links, but just wanted to recognise the importance of that and endorse doing more of that over the next few years together.
Thank you, Sarah. You can see jointly through the consultation and engagement, we have drawn out a key mission around a city on the move and that talks deliberately to our transport and our connectivity as a city. And the second part of that objective links to connected with the infrastructure to grow. We are the fourth largest city, we have a significant growth agenda, we have a significant opportunity through housing growth, as you've heard from the previous item, and we do need to make sure that we've got the transport connectivity and active travel arrangements, train, mass transit, the tram etcetera and the bus capability to move people safely, securely around the city and a connected transport system that is accessible for as many people as possible as well. Linking to key institutions and assets across the city as well and also enabling health and wellbeing outcomes as part of that. So yeah, it's a really important point and I think, as you can see, we have the four key missions here, it's actually come out very strongly in the consultation that a city on the move is one of our top priorities here.
Last comment from Greg?
Just to add to Kate's answer, layers and layers and layers of detail on transport specifically, if it would be helpful to the board more than happily come and unpack some of that, many of which is very, very directly health-related and a very specific but not only transport-related one, a year and a bit into the clean air zone, I would love to have a conversation with the board about the sort of clean air, where we are and where next, because at some point we'll have to do the thinking on the where next and there'll be some difficult conversations ahead. So we can schedule that in, people let me know if we want to schedule something in on either transport or air quality because they are slightly separate things.
I think I see a lot of people nodding, so I assume that there's support for that. Thank you. I think we're probably going to have a short break now, maybe 10 minutes, just for a quick coffee comfort break and then we'll start quite promptly, so thanks.
Things that we need to attend to as a city, so Ruth, over to you.
Great, thanks Greg and afternoon everybody, nice to see you again. So previously I've done updates about specific aspects of health protection, so for example childhood immunisations, but today I'm going to be talking about the system itself. It is complex, it is across a whole range of all of our organisations and I want to highlight some areas there that we're doing well and some things that I think we need to do to strengthen our governance as a system. Just to remind people about what health protection is, because I band it around all the time, but sometimes it's helpful to explain it. It's about managing infectious disease, it's about preventing those infectious diseases through a whole range of things like immunisation, but like things that colleagues in environmental health do such as inspecting food businesses and it's also preparing and responding to emergencies. Some of the questions that I'm asking the board today are about two things really. How can you in your organisation strengthen your system in terms of what you do to commission and procure, what your governance systems are, what your relationships are with other organisations? And then the second thing that I'm asking the board is about whether you feel we should have a review of our health protection system to check that it is working as well as it can. And the reason that we're asking that is because there's been some recent practice in West Yorkshire where they have reviewed their system, the ICB reviewed the health protection system and came up with some helpful things that they felt they could do to strengthen it. So I'm asking if you think that that's something we should do locally here. I suppose you'll have read the paper, but just a reminder of that a safe health protection system underpins our healthy places, our best start in life and also has elements about access to services to everybody, access some of our preventative things that we have in place and also about tackling racism and discrimination because we often find that there is stigma in relation to infectious diseases and there can be opportunities sometimes taken for unhelpful racist stereotypes in infectious diseases as well. I suppose I just wanted to talk briefly about some of the risks. There's risks to individuals and communities from infectious diseases and not being prepared for some of those emergencies, but there's also risks to us as organisations in terms of reputation and legal risks and also about situations escalating to have impacts on wider aspects of the system, for example, school attendance. And I know when we came before and we talked about the measles outbreak that we'd had, we were really, really trying to avoid impacting on school attendance in the community that we really wanted to be attending school. So you'll have seen in the paper that some of the things that make a good health protection system are about strong governance. I've put relationships, relationships, relationships because that is what we often draw on when we have an unpredictable situation and we need to respond to it and we work really hard across the years on making sure those relationships are strong and in place. And then we also have some operational issues that we need to resolve to make sure if we do need to press the button, the things do work at that point. So in terms of what we've been doing over the last year in our team in the local authority on Greg's behalf to provide assurance to Greg and to you as a board, we have been aiming to strengthen our governance. We're now producing an annual report which details what we're doing and what we need to do more of. One of the, we've been strengthening our relationships by having more regular meetings with our colleagues, for example, from UK Health Security Agency and Environmental Health. But one of the things that we really recognise is that we need to do more on that. We, as I say, we don't know what the next situation we'll face will be. There's a high level of unpredictability that actually we're never going to be able to predict what is going to be the next big situation. I think a classic example of that was Covid. We were preparing for a flu pandemic and it wasn't a flu pandemic and that was on the risk register very highly and that wasn't quite what we got. So I think what we're trying to say in some of the recommendations here is strengthening our governance, our ability to have strong relationships as organisations and making sure that we've got the right things in place if we do need to press the button is what we need to do to reduce the risks as far as possible. So I'm really happy to take questions, I'm really happy to take thoughts from people about your experience of how the system could be strengthened and then I would be really interested in the thoughts of the board about whether we should undertake a review. In West Yorkshire, it was the ICB who undertook the review of the system to check that we've got the things in place that we can have to as far as possible mitigate the substantial risks, as Greg said, in this area of work. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Angela?
Thanks Ruth for the report and I'm not going to, I just have a question. Are we kind of a horizon scanning about possible future risks? I'm just thinking in terms of like climate change, for example, with the weather getting warmer, there will be things that we currently don't have here. I'm just thinking, you know, my family live in the south of Italy and there are things that they've never had before, but now they have, you know, even just thinking about insects that they never used to have, now they have infestations that can, you know, bring their own kind of problems in terms of diseases that they can carry or infections and things like that. Are we horizon scanning and also, you know, the long-term impact in terms of general health?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That's a really important point that we're increasingly considering the impact of climate change on a number of these diseases, how they mutate, how they spread. It is the case that different vectors for diseases, mosquitoes etcetera, can now live in different climates that they couldn't previously. It's quite a big area of work now for UK Health Security Agency, our partners, doing that horizon scanning. But also actually that's quite persuasive for people about climate change. They see the reality of climate change by seeing, oh, those insects now live in our country that never did before. So it's also a really important way to make the case for the fact that we need to act on climate change. So yes, our colleagues in Uxham are doing that, yes, that's quite a persuasive thing about why we need to address climate change, but also that has impact potentially on our services and on our managing of different diseases because we see diseases that we previously wouldn't have seen. And sometimes we have cases imported, by which we mean somebody's travelled into the country already infected with a disease that then the system has to then manage.
Just to add, extreme heat will be more and more prevalent, we'll just about cope when it's going to be 40 degrees for two or three days. When it's going to be 40 degrees for 14 days, more folk will die. We do not yet have a properly robust response to that across all of the sectors and all of the agencies, anywhere in the country. We have been well-served by investing heavily in freshwater flood defences broadly, don't always work, but broadly work, haven't yet done our homework on extreme heat. And I'll say the word, there will be another pandemic and that is very, very squarely number one on my, on any director of public health risk radar. Don't know when it'll happen, but it will happen. So we are future planning as best we can.
Thanks Greg for depressing us all before Christmas, but I mean it was a similar thing actually. I think we learnt a lot, very painful lessons through Covid. My personal feel is that we've probably regressed a little bit. So I think anything that tests the system and tests the response, I think would be very helpful, so I would certainly support that. I think from, probably speaking in behalf of GP colleagues in particular, I think the NHS England prioritising vaccination is really helpful, but I do hope they'll also prioritise looking at the funding and the inequalities in the funding, particularly for practices in more deprived areas where it's really difficult to actually get the same rates of vaccination and some of the financial penalties at the moment that then actually sort of penalise the practices and make it even more difficult for them to hit the rates in vaccination. So we've written a couple of letters to NHS England, I think we did get a response eventually. I think it's really good to see that as a priority within the next layers of planning.
I don't think we did get a response, Ag.
Did we not? No, maybe we should chase that if it's not a priority, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks Ruth and thanks Greg, really welcome this conversation, just very briefly to add on the climate piece, I think it's not just about new disease, it's also about how we do what we do now in extreme heat situations, so we know that it's very difficult to store drugs, to perform operations, some of those conditions. So there's a kind of business continuity risk to delivering the care that we deliver now, not just additional and new changes in disease burden profile that we might need to consider. So just to log that one, as we think about adaptation, I think one of my questions, you've set out in the paper some priorities for the year ahead, noticing that really important contributions we can make across many of those, but wanted to talk a bit more about scope of what you were suggesting around a wider review because a health protection system could be huge or we could make it more specific in where we wanted to focus. There's been the recent paper that was brought here about the lessons learned from the Covid response, so I'm conscious we've got different pockets of learning probably already in place, bits of work that have been done this year, a plan to be done next year. So how big in scope and on what sort of timeline would you be considering or suggesting a review?
Yeah, I mean I think this is taking learning from West Yorkshire and West Yorkshire, they particularly considered their governance arrangements. And although governance sounds quite dry, it's also about relationships. By having your governance strong, you have those relationships in place that when something goes wrong, you know how to speak to somebody else to react. And I think an example of that that I put in the paper is the Mass Treatment and Vaccination Plan, which we've spent a long time reviewing and updating. And you could say, well, why have we done that for a document that you, you know, that you don't need to use all the time? But actually that develops the understanding and the relationships between the different organisations to say, okay, you do that, you do that, nobody does this, oh dear, that's a gap. So I think when I'm talking about a review, I think I am talking about the governance arrangements because that then flushes out where you haven't got strong enough relationships to be able to respond when you have a difficult situation. And colleagues around the table will remember that when we had the measles outbreak, we did deal with it really quickly and that was because we had amazing partners who were ready, but also that wasn't the first time we'd ever had a conversation with them. It wasn't like, oh hello, I don't know you, but could you tomorrow go and vaccinate in a school? We'd been through our governance arrangements in discussions with those services for a long period of time to understand what they could and couldn't do. So I think I would focus it on governance because I think the other stuff gets flushed out through that, if that makes some sense.
Definitely makes sense. I guess it prompts a follow-up reflection for me that the governance probably looks different depending on which part of the health protection system you're focusing on. So then it's which bits do we want to... focusing on. So then it's which bits do we want to look at in particular? Because you'll want different people at the table.
We can, we can make such a review relatively straightforward, relatively painless. It can be relatively quick actually. But you know, it's a really practical example. On a bank holiday Monday, have we got somebody that can swab a lot of people in a care home? No, it's really, really hard to sort that out actually. If we needed to stand up a mass vaccination centre quickly, we don't know how. So we will know how because we'll, we'll do the right thing in the right way. But we haven't got the right governance around that. So it's, it's those kinds of practical things that do not infrequently crop up that we need to just work out who has what responsibility to do what, that minimises the reliance on goodwill and good relationship and hardwires it into the way that institutions operate, including our own.
Angela?
Yeah, sorry. I've put up my hand straight after, because I've remembered something else that I wanted to ask. And it actually links to governance and links to relationships and lesson learned from Covid. So we, during Covid, we established fantastic relationship with community groups. We've had a report about it. But how, how do we ensure that those relationships are still valid and there whilst we are doing our business as usual and there isn't a crisis? So how, because that's really important because otherwise, particularly certain community groups that were fundamental for the vaccination programme during Covid, for certain communities that were reluctant. If we don't engage with them on a regular basis for other things, they might feel like we're using them rather than work as partners. So how do we ensure that? I do agree that governance is very important for that reason.
Yeah, and I think that's a real challenge. And I think we have to acknowledge that's a challenge because one of the only things that was sort of good in Covid was that we were all focused on Covid. So there was an element of a team approach, everybody in it together. And I think that was really, that single-mindedness really helped us. And I think we have to acknowledge that all the other priorities have come back in now, of course, as they absolutely must do. But therefore, the, the lack of single-mindedness will affect some of those relationships. I think I completely agree with you that the role of the community and voluntary sector was really, really important to the city's response. And we have to try and work out how we can maintain those relationships in peace time. And also, there's quite a need to be proportionate. So colleagues will, you know, will know that I came and talked about measles and we have, we have to be proportionate about how big a threat it is for the whole city, if it's just an issue in one place, if it's just an issue in one group. So we have to get our communication really clear on that. I think that as part of the governance review, considering some of the relationships that might have weakened since Covid should be a part of that actually, because you're right, otherwise we won't be able to draw in and learn from that expertise when we have future situations. Yeah, it is coming. It is, yeah. We just don't know when and we don't know what it's going to be.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have the ask of the board, which I think people have said they're pretty supportive of. And then it was whether we actually request a review. Anyone think we shouldn't do a review? So I think you've got support for that Greg too. So thank you. Let's move on.
Just very briefly, will we bring a kind of a scope and then in terms of reference back to this group for that review then to look at next time? What's the next step on that?
For ease, we'll do by email rather than, with the board in your midst, we'll do by email. That's okay.
Okay, should we move on to Homewards? Caroline?
There we go, that's the right one, sorry. This is quite a brief report, partly because I'm sad to say, I'm not necessarily the subject expert. I'll do everything that I possibly can. And the board are really asked to note the Home of Sheffield Programme and endorse our involvement in it with a follow-on recommendations that progress will be brought back to the board as appropriate. It flowed quite nicely from a previous agenda item around the importance of having good quality safe homes for people and focuses particularly on our engagement in the programme and our priorities around young people and young families and making sure that we prevent and support quality homes for them, as well as having that wraparound support in the community, support to continue employment for people who are at risk, building the housing supply and using data and analysis to support prevention work, as well as wider programming around challenging narratives around homelessness and making sure that we are addressing any disproportionality in equalities groups. I'll try to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions? Comments?
Thanks. More, I guess more of a comment than a question. I'm conscious that some of the provision that's supporting that we have in place currently is time-bound and not sustained. And so one of my concerns when I see us starting new things is thinking about how we also maintain what we've got now, recognising the importance of relationships and the time it takes to develop them. So I'm conscious, for example, of frameworks that provide support to homeless people who are arriving at emergency departments to support them. That, they don't have a long-term fixed funding arrangement. And so just thinking as we start to pump prime new activity, how are we also mindful of those things that we've got in place where relationships are well established and where relationships can be hard to build and support those to sustain, as well as do try new and different things.
Yeah, I think that's really valuable. And it actually leads to a point I should have made around the governance and how we're trying to make sure that this programme links in with existing governance and work, including around our existing home strategy and our changing futures and programme with people, supporting people with multiple disadvantage to try to ensure that we are working in a sustainable way and using the £500,000, which is a lot, but also not a lot at the same time, to make meaningful lasting difference.
Greg?
Just to add, we should never refuse resource when it's made available to the city. Your point is well made, it's agreed. No one would disagree with it. The programme itself isn't, clearly isn't going to solve homelessness. And there's a job of work to ensure that this programme gets wrapped into a much wider set of work around the homelessness prevention strategy. Easier said than done, and there's some stitching to do, to do that. The, the work with the Royal Household has been really, really influential actually, particularly around the sort of the, addressing the stigma and changing attitudes towards that. It's been a really, really important piece of the work. But the funding itself is short-term and no one knows how to deal with the consequences of short-term funding coming to an end. If anyone has any bright ideas, we're all ears.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? And I think we're just asked to note, endorse, support the development. And then I think it was have a review in 12 months' time. So I think everyone happy with that? Great, thank you. So should we move on to the dementia strategy? Just maybe ask colleagues if they want to come and join us. And I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Hi everybody. So I'm Liz Tuke. I work in the ICB and Programme Lead and Transformation and Development Delivery Manager in the Mental, Health, Learn Disability, Dementia and Autism Team. I've got Heather with me as well.
Hi, I'm a standing and I'm going to be uncostumely quiet in this presentation. I'm here to support Liz, who's done the majority of this work with colleagues in local authority who couldn't be here today, particularly Jo Pass and Amelia. So I'm just handing over to Liz and I'm here to answer questions at the end alongside Liz.
Thanks Heather. So and on that point really, we're here, obviously you've got me today and Heather today, but we're here really on behalf of the dementia strategy partners. So it's not just an ICB or a council thing. You'll note that this report has been sponsored by Alexis and by Emma, but actually it's much wider that in terms of the partnership work. And you've got a lovely slide there with all of our dementia strategy partners. So it's absolutely about working in partnership across the NHS and the council and the voluntary sector and community centre. But most importantly, also with people living with dementia and their carers and across our key partner organisations, but also the wider VCSE organisation and care sector as well. And the implementation of dementia strategy for 2019 to 2024 has been and ongoing from 2025 has been organised through the dementia strategy implementation group, which is a multi-agency group. So you've got a slide there. I won't go through all the detail because it's included within the dementia strategy documents and in papers. But it talks about some of the positive achievements from the 2019 to 2024 strategy. So the strategy that preceded the update that we're here to talk to you about. And what you'll see across, across those examples really is that actually they're very wide-ranging examples and they really do sum up that we are, excuse me, greater than the sum of our parts in terms of the organisations working across, across this work. So you'll see obviously NHS examples there, local authority, voluntary sector. An example there, just to give a very few examples, is around the development of the community dementia services and dementia link worker services, which are funded by the local authority, but largely sit within the voluntary sector. And back in 2019, there were only four monthly dementia cafes in Sheffield for people living with dementia and carers. But now there are more than, there are only four, but now there are more than 40. And over 1,000 people with dementia attended their local group within the first three months of this year as well. You'll also see how we provided information and resources to doctor surgeries to increase the quality and the number of the annual dementia care reviews that happen within primary care for people who have dementia. And last year, 84% of people diagnosed with dementia had their annual review within primary care. So lots of positive achievements across 2019 to 2024. But we know there's just still so much more to do. And that's what the dementia strategy talks about in detail as well. And it's within the context of, within Sheffield, we know that by 2025, there will be up to 7,333 people aged over 65 with dementia, about 140 people under 65 living with dementia with young onset dementia. So and actually those numbers will continue to grow as well. So that by 2030, we'd expect there would be nearly 8,000 people over 65 with dementia in Sheffield. And we know that research from Alzheimer's Society, National Research warns that that projected rise in dementia is going to pose a significant, significant healthcare, social care and economic challenge, with the costs for people with dementia estimated to more than double between now and 2040 as well. So this is obviously lots of, lots of factors there for us to consider as well. As we've got there on the slide as well, obviously in terms of modifiable risk factors, four in 10 cases of dementia could be prevented. So we know there's lots of work to be done across, across that, that work as well. So our vision for people with dementia has been and continues to be within this new strategy, refreshed strategy, that people with dementia are supported to live life to their full potential. And that can sound a challenging thing and obviously can be very challenging for people in terms of what is a very significant and significant diagnosis. But we do know from all the work that's happening in Sheffield that there are a lot of opportunities that can support people to do that in many cases as well. So last year of 20, well, over 23 and 24, we started the review and engagement process to develop the new strategy. Co-production's been really central to that as well with our partner organisations, but also with people living with dementia and carers as well. So that the plans that we've got continue to be central to what people with dementia and the carers say is important to them. And you'll see there was a smiley faces and a not so smiley face. Some of the key themes that came out of the survey and the consultation that we did around what people felt was working well for them. So people living with dementia and the carers, what was working well at the moment in Sheffield and actually what were the real challenges in terms of them living well with dementia as well. So the strategy, you've got obviously more details within the papers that we've circulated. But there are nine commitments which describe how as partners, we will achieve the vision of the strategy. And this, it's already been through, so the strategy's been through the internal and partnership-based governance processes and structures of the partner organisations as well. We had a launch event at the end of last month as well with over, Angela, who was helpfully chairing that, helping us to chair that and lead that, over 210ees, which included people living with dementia, as well as lots of people working across Sheffield around dementia as well. One of the highlights that people found from the event was we had a musical in Toulouse partway through the strategy. And there was a really fantastic moment where one of our people living with dementia was at the event, came straight to the front of the room to get a drum to join in with some of the music because he was very familiar with having done this music group before as one of the local groups. It was just, you know, a really lovely positive moment, as well as lots of other contributions from partners as well. Next steps then is for the dementia strategy group to review the existing implementation plans for all of the work that the group are all doing, the group is doing. And just to confirm what the implementation plans are for going forward. And what we've been really keen to do over the last few years is to have an annual prioritisation process as well, where we can bring in that ongoing engagement and design from people who have dementia and carers and from partners. And in terms of the annual prioritisation, that is also recognising that we can't as partners achieve everything that we want to that's included within the strategy straight away. It's a five-year strategy, there's a big ask in there. But by taking that process to keep taking stock and marking our homework and seeing, you know, how we've done so far, we can, we can really, you know, move it forward as, as much as possible really. Next slide has just got the summary of the nine commitments within the strategy as well. And I won't go through that in detail, you will have seen that in the report. But also just to note that in the strategy itself, under each of those commitments, there is a list of what will be different. And we've based those what will be different priorities on what people with dementia have told us and what we would want to achieve as part of the strategy as well. And that's what the implementation plans will be based on as well. The next slide just summarises a little bit about the relevance to the health and wellbeing strategy as well. You've got more details within the report as well. And we feel that there are, there is relevance across the building blocks and the radical shift in the health and wellbeing strategy. I've put a few examples there as well. And just finally, just bringing us on to the, within the paper, you've got the recommendations for the board as well. So that's really asking the board if you'd be happy to note that the dementia strategy has been approved through the internal and partnership-based governance structures of the partner organisations. But also to think whether or not this board can also help the member, its member organisations and the other partners within the dementia strategy partnership to enact those what will be different pledges that are within the nine commitments in the strategy document as well. If you've got any questions though, also please do let myself and Heather know. Thank you.
Heather, have you got anything to say? I'm amazed that Heather's not said anything.
No. I am. I guess really this is a fantastic example of proper integrated working. And we've been on this journey with our local authority partners, our councillor support, the voluntary sector, the teaching hospital. It's a really good, proper, well-worked strategy collaboratively. And I think some of the achievements that have happened have been because of that work together and trying to unblock barriers. There are some, still some challenges. We know that we need to get better at diagnosis and waiting times. And that's a particular focus for us as an ICB. But some of the things, as Liz has just said, going from four dementia cafes to 40, it's making a difference to people's lives. And so in terms of outcomes for people, quality of people's lives whilst experiencing dementia, that's the kind of thing that we're trying to focus on collaboratively with our partners. And just to really sort of celebrate the partnership further, it's a real pity that Jo Pass wasn't able to come today because she's been absolutely fantastic and a pleasure to work with. So yeah, and Amelia Stockdale as well, just turned out a fantastic event last week, a couple of weeks ago. So thank you.
So just to reiterate, big thank you to everybody. I mean, I'm hearing so much positive stuff about this. You know, often we talk partnership, but we don't deliver it. I mean, this is partnership delivery. And I think it's, it's really important work. So just a massive thank you to everyone who's been involved. Sinjin?
Yeah, I mean, it's great, isn't it? So really good. Just the thing that sort of surprised me as reading through was about the resource question. And, you know, you said there's so much more to do. I don't think you were just talking about future expanded need. I think you were also talking about... talking about what we could do now. And I'm aware it's one of these areas where stitching time saves nine, but we don't usually do that, we prefer to spend nine later, it seems to me, as a health service rather than one earlier on. So are you saying that you're confident that the resource is there, it's just been spent in the wrong place, or you think you don't need any resource to fulfil what your strategy's saying? That's something that puzzled me.
I think any health services and particularly when working in mental health, learning disability, autism and dementia, we always feel that more resource is required, but I think there is something about the partners working together around some of that early intervention work. So the cafe is another example of that where, and also the support for carers living with dementia, that we're trying to intervene early to prevent a crisis breakdown. We are, we have had some additional investment into the Admiral Nurses, into Teaching Hospital to help those pathways and that's a really positive and we're hoping to seek some additional funding to extend that into community. So kind of watch this space on that score as well.
I mean, that's great to hear, I think because it's, you know, obviously we either look after these people with dementia in their own home, or they get looked after in hospital, or they get looked after in a care home and it's much better and as a by-product also much cheaper if we can pull that money in the community, so yeah.
Yeah, I think also just to note, there was a commitment as well from the council and ICB's executive strategic group to look at what's the different funding that we've got already for dementia across the NHS and across the local authority and what's the art of the possible within that. I mean, what that will, the outcomes of that will be obviously at the moment, we don't know, but I think we're really committed to looking at what we can do around this and obviously, you know, across the partners, we're all always looking for additional funding. I think we can do a lot with what we've got, but we're always looking for more.
Thank you, I'll make one more point, which goes back to the admissions thing later, is that that will often be uncounted, so we'll be spending resource in hospital, it won't be down as a dementia issue, it'll be down as a CFPD or off legs or probably hypertension issue, but actually that's not what's going on, so make sure that that count is bigger than is imagined. Thank you. Greg?
Cheers. Solid story and solid strategy. The nine commitments clearly look great, I'm guessing there's a load of detail underneath and I wouldn't mind digging into that at some point, but that's later. One question, one sort of, one off, one, no, two sort of questions. One, I didn't quite get the sort of the health inequality, pro-equity aspect of that and I wonder if it, as you just rolled it forward, it just needs a bit of strengthening. And then secondly, the question I suppose, what would be most helpful? What can the board, what would be most helpful that the board do?
Yeah, so just to come in on the equity point of view, so we have got a full equality impact assessment for the strategy, but actually we need to look at the detail of that and the implementation plans. I think there was some really interesting, I'm not going to go into all the detail now and I think we might have circulated it with the papers, but lots of really interesting things that came out of that that made us realise both that there was stuff that was already happening as part of the strategy that we were looking at that did reflect on some of those areas, but also there's more we can do. You know, just as an example, one of the things that came out was the research around women being more likely to develop dementia, which I think we know already, but also how inconclusive it is that people assume that's just because of an age thing, but there's a lot, there's more to it and so on. So there's lots of things that we pulled out that we can then feed into the implementation plans about how do we address that. Certainly plenty that came out around the need to do more about minority ethnic communities as well, who we know some minority ethnic communities are much more likely to have dementia, but also that diagnoses and processes aren't always culturally accessible. So I think there's a big to-do list around that, it'd be really good to talk about that in more detail. I think you're right, there could be more in the documents itself, but there is more detail as a kind of work in progress as well behind that as well.
And I think in terms of the ask of the board, we stripped the commitments back from thirteen to nine because we recognise it was kind of, you know, a little bit unwieldy, but I suppose everybody's got some inputs into this, so whether that's been supporting work around a dementia-friendly Sheffield, whether it's about the care in hospitals, primary care, et cetera. So it feels as if this is truly an opportunity for this health and wellbeing board to kind of get behind those pledges within the strategy and help us to achieve them. And I think it comes back to what you were saying earlier, Sinjin, about that difference and are we really looking at that upfront intervention or are we going to carry on spending once people get into hospital? So I think from my point of view, it would be support to that direction of travel of trying to change the narrative about once you've got dementia, it's inevitable that you'll end up in hospital repeatedly and then in a care home pretty rapidly. And in terms of the kind of benefits realisation from that, there's the population benefits, there's also some financial benefits across the system and that's what we're wanting to explore and would want support with. Liz, you want to add something to that?
Yeah, and I just, I think, I agree Heather, and I think it's that mainstreaming a lot of this as much as we can and I think some of the examples you gave there on hospital are an example of that, but also there's so many of the discussions where this is really relevant, you know, thinking about from a social care perspective, we know that the majority of people who are living in a care home either are living, they have dementia or suspect, or may not be diagnosed but dementia or suspected dementia, so it's not peripheral to a lot of doing, it's very much integral to part of that. So I think that's one of the key messages as well, I think really, is for all of our partners to understand how that really fits across that. And I mean, end of life is another example around this, there's a lot of fantastic work in Sheffield around end of life, we've been linking in very strongly from the dementia strategy with the strategies around that. I mean, rethinking about the recent Health Watch research around end of life as well, that's something that we've used within the strategy from a dementia perspective to make sure that we're, you know, considering, you know, we're not just looking at our own separate little plans here around dementia, this is around bolting on mainstreaming and influencing and supporting all the work that's happening anywhere within the city where it's relevant, prevention being a very good example of that. And I know Greg, you've made the point about how this isn't a separate little dementia thing, this is all about, you know, cardiovascular risk, it's all the same things that we need to be focusing on, but dementia is part of it and if we can influence it from a dementia perspective, that's fantastic as well.
Angela?
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. And, you know, this came to my committee in November before the official launch and the event was fantastic. I just want to mention some people that have been involved that have not been named, which is people with lived experience, there were quite a lot of people and their carers involved in, you know, putting the new wording together and I think that was what was particularly was special about that event, there were so many people, you know, on every table I think there were people with lived experience. So it made it a lot more relevant. I think lots of us will have experience with members of our family that have, you know, had dementia, passed away, whatever, and it's incredible how far we've come already, say in the last twenty years for example, on how dementia is perceived, you know, going from four to forty cafes run by voluntary sector organisations, that that's where the key is, is the prevention, isn't it? Is the support to prevent the crisis. But what we had quite an interesting conversation at the committee when it came is that prevention element and how certain types, there's research that indicates certain types of dementia can be prevented, you know, same as cardiovascular diseases, the same as diet, exercise and the reason why women are more likely to get, I think it was you Liz who said this, women are more likely to get dementia is because they stop exercising because they're too busy, you know, you know, looking after the children, doing everybody's admin, et cetera. And I think that is where our role maybe is, is like, why, you know, I didn't know that some kind of dementia can be prevented, so why are we not talking about it? So why don't we as partners say, when we have discussions with people, why your diet is important, why exercising is important, because it also, apart from, you know, healthier heart and everything, is you, you are less likely to develop dementia, not all type of dementias, but some kind of dementia. So that's something that maybe we can do as in terms of narrative.
Sounds good.
It is a major health inequality, isn't it? Let's be honest and so I think the questions about race and the profiling and gender are really important in this strategy. We need to make sure that the equality impact assessments that we'll do on the implementation plan speak to that. So thank you for that support.
Any other comments, questions? So I think we're asked to note the strategy and support it and I think overwhelming support's probably where we'd describe it. So again, a big thank you, huge appreciation for all the hard work and if you could thank the colleagues who aren't here today just for all the work that they've put into it, this is really good, thank you.
And I have to say, Liz's hard work, can I just kind of turn up at things like this and get the glory? Thank you.
Should we move on to the minutes of the previous meeting? So really any corrections, everyone happy, anything we want to change at all? And then there was a matter arising from it, which was ask for verbal updates and how partners are considering responding to the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan.
So I promised you homework, here it is. You all agreed to take the plan to various governance structures and I wouldn't mind a check-in on where that got to. I'll do, the Sheffield Council did it yesterday, fortuitously timed, and basically the ask was to build the plan into core mission, purpose, policy, strategy, service design, delivery, et cetera. The key question is how does X, whatever X of the day is, help unfair gaps in quality and length of life? So very well accepted, you were there and I think our job of work is now to do that over the next decade. Dan, I think you told me, university have and you have some form, the University of Sheffield have some formal words and Sheffield Health and Social Care have and VCS presumably Social Leaders Group via Helen.
Yes, I've got some updates from voluntary and Sheffield, from University of Sheffield and from Health and Social Care Trust as James had to leave early. So from voluntary and Sheffield, Helen Sims, shared the plan with the VCSE Leaders Forum and will disseminate it more widely to the sector in December. A workshop with VCSE leaders in response to the plan to focus on developing a community guide, prevention, collect stories, shared narrative to bring clarity for the sector and to feed in case studies and to bring back to a future agenda with the board. And VAS themselves actively working across the system on alignment of the plan with other local and national policy and strategy, for example, ICB Housing and Health, DCMS on the newly launched VCSE covenant work. From the University of Sheffield, Rob Sykes, board member, took the plan to the university executive board on the nineteenth of December, so discussed it in the context of HE sector challenges, wider political and economic context and the requirement for university to undertake activity that is in line with its charitable objectives, two actions arising from that. So Rob is trying to meet with the faculty vice president for social sciences to explore the extent to which they'll be able to help with the issues highlighted by the board on identification of a suitable set of indicators around who are resting in the race of quality work, which will be helpful. Not necessarily a commitment to help, but a commitment to explore whether they can and they'll be in touch as soon as they've had those conversations. They've also, the university executive board has agreed to map their current activity against the commitments of the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan, so they can build clarity on the existing scale and breadth of activity and then have a further discussion on that basis in the new year. And the Health and Social Care Trust brought the plan to their board development session in October and then to a formal board meeting in November where they agreed a set of commitments, which they'll be delivering as an organisation in response to the plan, and I can share those with the board if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Happy to update from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals' perspective, so we have taken the plan through our trust executive group where it was supported and then it was formally taken through to our public board. And we've made a series of commitments with a plan to review those on an annual basis and make commitments on an annual basis that we can update back to this board on. So in this first phase, we have a draft Health and Equalities Action Plan that's in development, which will include a focus on improving fair access to our services, which is one of the key focuses within the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan and will contribute to that element. And really keen to work with colleagues here and others to better understand some of those barriers that we might need to address, so work collaboratively and in partnership on that. We are moving into the next phase of implementation of our Equality, Diversity and Inclusion Action Plan to tackle racism and discrimination, again, another key part of the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan and so they will speak to each other in how that develops. We've also got work underway to develop a ten-year clinical strategy that we're calling our Clinical Blueprint and that will particularly focus on how we need to develop the services that we offer to meet changing population health need and we're really grateful for the support that we're getting from the public health teams who inform some of that future forecasting of population health needs. So I think that will really help us to respond to what people have really told us matters now, but what we think will matter going forward as well. And then we are coming to the end of one of our sustainability plans, it will be a refresh published in October this next year, the next October, and I think that will contribute really well to the building block we've identified around climate and environmental crisis. So we can bring updates on any of those back through this board, but we'll review that on an annual basis.
Brilliant, thank you. Anyone else want to give any? Judy?
Just saying that the Health Watch, Idris Gubba also endorsed the plan and being there wanted to have a further conversation, I think Dan is coming to a meeting in January. Yeah.
Angela?
And I was wondering whether, we were talking about setting the agenda for the HCP on Monday, whether we could get it on the agenda, I can ask Emma to put it on, because we just had like a big governance kind of review and one of the things that came out in the report was like setting the agenda and, you know, who decides what goes on the agenda, so it'd be good to put it on.
That'd be really helpful, yeah, thank you. Fiona?
I'm slightly further behind, having just joined the group recently. Next Wednesday, we have this as an agenda item on our College of Health for Being Life Sciences Leadership Team group and from there it will then go on to the exec boards as Sarah and University of Sheffield have also done. So as I said earlier, this cuts across so many different areas of our work within the university and I need to make sure that it therefore is delivered across all of the relevant areas as well. So if I can come back with a written response in January, if that's okay. Okay.
Greg? Very quick, always happy to be on tour to talk about this stuff, so I'm sure to be available, I'm happy to come out to meetings, et cetera. On the health and care partnership thing, I'm being a bit pointy and making the place matters, I'd also want to go to the ICB as well, because I think the ICB need to be cited on, there are four health and wellbeing boards in South Yorkshire, I nearly said Sheffield there, and there are four health and wellbeing strategies dear the ICB, these are the things that we care about and I do think I'll pester Emma and Gavin on that one. Thank you. Teach, I think, has decided that your homework's done for this week.
Sounds good, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other business? Two.
Two very quick AOBs. One, many of you will remember Chief Medical Officer was in town on the fifteenth of March in prep for his annual report for 2024, he published it today, it's on his website, there's a chapter in Sheffield, thank you to all those who contributed to it, I've only yet read the Sheffield chapter, which was clearly amazing, the rest of it looks pretty good as well. He talked about housing, food, vaccination screening, STIs and exercise and physical activity and air pollution, many of the things that we regularly talk about in some shape or form here. So read it at your leisure, it's fifty-nine megabytes and two hundred and forty pages long. Second AOB, Pharmacy Needs Assessment, we've published one in 2022, I said to the board then, that was the minimum viable product and I had previously said to the board, there will be no update in the immediate future and being asked by lots of people to do it, it's a responsibility of the board, not necessarily mine, but it'll land on me, I don't have the staff to, basically. If my arm is twisted to do it, it will be a minimum viable product. I cannot, its purpose is to drive the commissioning of community pharmacy, I cannot cite a commissioning decision that's been taken as a result of a pharmacy needs assessment and doing an updated pharmacy needs assessment will not solve the fundamental problem in community pharmacy, but if I have to do it, it will be minimum viable product, you all need to know that and you need to be as comfortable as you can be about that, unless someone dobbs up a load of results, which I don't think will happen, I'll pause there.
What's the consequence of not doing it?
The board gets told off by somebody, I presume. The, the board gets told off by somebody, I presume.
Good.
I can absolutely get the rationale for what Greg's saying. Health Watch gets quite a bit of feedback about pharmacies, all sorts of things, I won't go into the detail. So there might be the, the big picture stuff that we can't do, and I wouldn't want to lose any capacity to hear about patient experience, because it's so important to people. So I wonder if there's a, even a middle way, a sort of very cheap and cheerful way, we could do some of that, so we don't lose it entirely.
I don't disagree, Judy, so, and I don't know how this squares with the guidance on what health, pharmacy needs assessment should look like, and bluntly, nor do I care. The, the point that needs to be made is community pharmacy is vitally important and is deeply, deeply, deeply stretched resource-wise. Me producing an analysis isn't, 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 isn't going to solve that problem, but I'm very happy to make that point with the right data and call that the pharmacy needs assessment.
And that has to be used on the ICB and the national arenas, because that seems to be where the responsibility ultimately lies.
I mean, that, that to me would be much more useful, if people are happy with that. Brilliant, thank you. Anything else? So thank you, everyone. If I don't see you, just wish you all the best for Christmas, and, and I'll see you in the new year. Thank you.